Okay. Welcome to the August fifth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. Want to welcome everybody who was attending. Welcome to our guests. We're gonna skip over some of our meetings. Minutes or meetings. To go drink to and labor. But you guys have that way to get you out of here. And they can move on quickly. Dan, you want to take over?
Yeah, I'll let them answer some questions. The subdivision, they've got a piece of property. There's two lots there right now. They want to do this third lot in the back. And once we have three lots on a driveway, it becomes a road. So it kicks in all those major subdivision standards as normal. What they would like to do is proceed with that just as it is. Some of the deficiencies from a major subdivision will be you don't have the thirty foot right away as normal. We didn't check the gravel and things like that. So they're wanting this to basically just be treated as a driveway along that existing drive there. And I do have a letter from the Health Department saying that there's no additional perks. So there's not gonna be any future development anyplace there.
Is this in the decreed ownership?
No.
No. Okay. Where's that made at?
This is out off of Mayan Deer.
So there's two residences there?
Yeah, there's gonna be three. So there's a house up front. Mr. You're doing the house on right now, right?
Yes.
We're working on that now.
The house is already there, it's not complete yet.
Okay, yeah, we just issued a building permit for that this year. This is an existing house on the remainder, Mary and mine. And this will be the third house of Ms. Corbin's over there. So that would be her lot. And this is all family situation. Mary is their mother.
I think we've been pretty consistent with this family as far as a couple of ways we've already approved it. And some of this being a.
Yeah, what I usually tell you.
It's a family.
Yeah, it's a family, you know. We don't, we, you know, our goal, my dad's goal was, we don't want the property to leave the family. You know, her and I and my other two brothers, you know, we plan on passing it on, you know, plan passing it right on down the line. I mean, when we're pushing up daily lines, you know, whatever happens, happens, you know. That's the thing, it's a family owned piece of property. That piece of property belonged to my great aunt and uncle, Dorothy and Frederick Euro. And that property has been through like five generations of their family. And we're just kinda keep it, you know what I mean? We bought that property off of them back in like nineteen seventy-three. And one of my dad's wishes that we never, you know, so like I said, like you say, it's a family oriented thing where, you know, we don't plan on selling out to strangers. It's just over my dead body.
Now, do you have any issues with anything, Dad, or if you?
I mean, the subdivision ordinance doesn't make any real kind of exceptions for family. It just says if you're doing it by the road, however, the road standards, what kicks it in. If you're doing three lots, it's a major subdivision, whether you're a developer or family. It does have this waiver process, so, and that's usually the way I handle with people. I tell them, I'm gonna throw the book at you, you know, the subdivision ordinance, all the normal standards it would be for a major subdivision. You have a capability to ask for a waiver then if you feel that's a hardship or it's not appropriate in this case.
But to Tony's point, we've done, we've done this and others.
Yeah, in these family type situations, we have done that. When it's clear that it's not going to be something further subdivided where there are lots out there. I mean, the whole subdivision ordinance is trying to protect buyers of those lots, so.
And this is classified as a waiver?
Yeah, this would be a waiver from, they worded it a little differently to basically ask for a waiver from the definition of the road, so it would just basically be looked at as a driveway.
Well, maybe that we vote for a waiver for the Corbin property to the, for the variance for the year after we get into the office.
Okay, so, all right.
We'll proceed as shown on the plaque as a minor subdivision.
Any comment, Jim?
No.
Bruce?
Nothing good?
Yeah?
No.
I mean, I don't see any problem. I don't know what your intent is. And I think that is intended to be for long time, so, I mean, so, I guess, is there any other, I mean, do you have a motion to approve? Second to approve?
They already did that?
I thought you said second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So moved? You're good to go. Work the chat, who takes care of you? I just walked them out and got it over there.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Be careful now, be safe.
You too.
We had one, there were one, two, three, four, five, only two cases.
Backing up?
I hate to tell them, but they may plan for it to stay in the family, but it didn't. Eventually, it ain't gonna work out like that. We just sold my brother's place and we're selling my mom's place today, so it's, you know, you wanna keep it all, but after, sometimes the circumstances just. Tony, did you know the Savage guy that was dying, he was killed?
What's that?
Did you know the Savage guy that was, was Steve Savage, was that his name, that?
Yeah, that's my, that's my beard, I'm right.
Yeah, he, he worked for Cal Ripley.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, he was what, sixty?
Three, I think.
Okay, back to, we're gonna start with the agenda, then we'll go back to the previous minutes. Everybody, what, Mark?
Yeah.
Anybody remember Mark yet? I don't know that I knew or not. Any concerns or direction for the minutes? Motion to approve? Second? All favors? All opposed? So moved, yeah, it's just a minute.
Okay.
You have got anything you want to put forward? Bruce? Yeah? You don't want that many bids, Dad, we have anything?
No.
Okay, there we go, the subdivision plaque, you want to do them?
Yeah, we've got another college heights. So this is the one I bought, college. You've already given it preliminary approval last year. This is just another section. They did two lots in twenty eighteen, four more lots last year. Now they just got another section of this, and for final.
I guess those houses, they don't think they're our soul?
I'm not sure, I know the other day we did a final, they were looking to get to you another one. So I don't know if they've been sold yet, they're still in the development, this time, but they're moving along.
Their president located it.
How many lots were there, both of them in there?
Up on the college?
Yeah, that's Bumblebee, though, you have it before you get from college.
Okay.
How many lots, both of them or nine?
Fifteen lots, two. And then on this one, we've got another six lots.
It looks like they're doing everything by the book, right?
Yeah, we've already been out looking at the road.
It's like, I didn't move them, you took through the flat. That's presented, motion second?
I see.
And the further the cut, all favors? Aye, all opposed? So moved, good.
Okay.
And we got the other waiver request, it's Old Snyder Carl, right?
Yeah, this is a different Old Snyder. So this is not the subdivision out off of Pentling Road. This, I believe this is Cecil's brother, George. This is a different one. This is a subdivision. There's three waiver requests here for, in the subdivision ordinance, it says you have ten years after we grant final approval to actually record it. We've had several people, of course, we had a lot of subdivisions proved back in the day before. For the economy kind of tag, so we have some of these subdivisions have lingered. So what we have is a couple of people asking to have an extension on that. So George just had a single lot approved, he has not recorded it yet. I think he was thinking his son might want to do it, but they haven't yet, so he'd ask for an extension. And this is the plaque.
Yes, it's the same fellow, George. It's the same guy, but a different subdivision?
No, this, I believe this is Cecil's brother.
Yeah, no, you have Cecil's brother.
Yeah, yeah, so it's different. This is not the Rock Lake Creek Apers that you guys have looked at before. This is a different, this is just a minor subdivision that we looked at off of Sam Flat Road several years ago. That's when John signed back in twenty-ten, I believe. So it's coming up on that ten years, if he'd just like to have some more time to record that.
How much more time do we give him?
I think he asked for another ten years.
It's like we have a couple of ten-year requests, right?
Yeah.
He just asked for the extension, right?
Yes.
Exactly.
I guess I should know, but what's the purpose of the ten-year span?
I suppose just so, you know, there's some finality to it, and if regulations change a great deal, you don't have, you know, things hanging out there forever when things have changed.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And I think it'll be drafted back to you, doesn't it?
Yeah, if we approve it, typically I will go ahead and give it to Gary in our office to get ready to try to add a parcel in the database and stuff like that. So if it's just lingering out there, it's kind of hard to know what's gonna happen.
Bruce, you have any problems?
Don't, I don't. Me neither.
And then motion?
If it's already been approved once.
Second to your extension.
All favors? All opposed?
Okay, the subdivision ordinance is rather vague. It just says ten years unless a written extension is granted by the Planning Commission after the applicant shows good cause. So it doesn't go into a lot of detail.
Okay, King Meadows, Meadows later?
Yeah, so King Meadows, that one you've seen before. This is one how King Wilson wrote. They came, you guys left a date, had planned to do this subdivision, and then changed their mind, they actually have applied to put it into land preservation now.
Who's the people's name for this?
It's DCL Properties, I think, Shane Gray, was the one who wrote the letter. So their, their request is basically, they'd like to have another, I think they asked for two years, just to see what happens with land preservation, if they would get rejected. They'd like to still have the option of recording this, but their intent now is to put it in land preservation, sell a permanent conservation easement to the state.
You're asking for ten years as well?
Two years, two years, yes.
I would say you follow with it.
But they're trying to get it in, it's all made out of consistent with the three-year act of property.
Yeah, they've signed up for a district, so they're kind of restricted to what they can do anyway.
I mean, what do you, what's your date on it, when, I mean, it's, you don't face going to result, but anytime soon, or you think?
Well, they are, they're in the program to try to sell permanent easement. I think they're just trying to keep this option open. If that falls through, they'd like to have another couple of years to still be able to sell lots if that doesn't happen. But that, their intent now is to permanently preserve.
So you're okay with, with extending it out?
Yeah, if you feel that they've shown good cause.
That's just their backup plan, one time with that. Maybe to approve the two-year extension for the DCL five properties, or the property that they.
Bruce, you have any date on it?
No.
I think we're fine, they're just, that application process takes a while, so they're just trying to.
Yeah, hopefully there's gonna be money.
Yeah, I don't know, we had a lot of carryover from last year, so we did send more in, in July with no new applications. We were just taking people from the previous, from the previous cycle.
Okay, so they got pushed over into the next cycle?
Yes.
Okay. For all intents and purposes, we're gonna get to the ag program anyways.
Yeah, I think that's their, their hope.
Okay, motion?
I may move, move to the two-year extension.
Any further discussion? All favors? All opposed?
This is another one. You have one other request, it was just an email. This was Slater's and Old subdivision? So this is up in the northern end. Dirk Yoder was on this at Bay Star, they put this together. They recorded one section, they, they got final approval back in two thousand eight. They recorded lots thirteen to fifteen in twenty-eleven. And as her letter, her email says, the economy had fallen, they weren't able to sell or build any lots. So they still want to, but they just like an extension to have a little longer to sell those lots.
The first approval back in two thousand eight, that's when everything.
Right before the big crash.
It's been a standstill.
Any problems with that one there?
No, we're still holding a bond to make sure the roads are completed, so we still have that.
Are you still on the bond?
Typically, they'll, we'll hold the bond a while, and as they start selling lots, then they, you know, finish up when we release it. Of course, this one.
So how many lots have they gotten? They've gotten three. How many lots is it altogether?
Twenty-two.
That's twenty-two lots.
Yeah, and they, we have.
They got three, yeah.
We got thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, we did a record.
Any further discussion? I'm good.
I'm good to, to extend your extension for the government property there, I mean, yeah, the property, yeah.
I'll say.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? All approved, all favors? All opposed? So moved, Chad?
Okay.
Moving along.
Here pretty quickly, eh? One other waiver request, and this one was Rinker. He wants to just do a one-acre lot. It's a rather big piece of property. He wants to create a one-acre rather than a three-acre lot around the house. So to keep more of the additional land with the remainder piece, so he just wants to make a one-acre instead of three.
Where's this at?
That one is.
I'm trying to pronounce it.
It's the north side of Route fifty. So he wants to create a one-acre lot around his house, doesn't he? Yeah, he wants to keep the, the parent tract is bigger than twenty acres. He wants to create a lot around this, keep more of his existing farm with the parent tract.
So he would normally be required to keep three acres with the house?
Yeah, I think we've had that discussion before, that I think the, in the ag areas, the intent was you kind of push development away from there to preserve ag land. But when you have an existing house, it's kind of counterintuitive, because you're carving out more property around it, rather than preserving it with the pond.
So that, we require a three-acre lot to weigh it through, right?
Yes, yeah, it would be three acres, because it's over twenty acres, you have to, you're stuck with that three-acre minimum lot size. They do quote a section in the ordinance, one sixty-nine oh two seven. Subdivision, you may, it says the waiver may be granted by the Planning Commission if they find that it complies with the following, does not contribute to contiguous areas of farmland or forest, is primarily surrounded by lots of twenty acres or less.
So you don't have any concerns about this?
No. It looks like they're cutting out lots, and we're not even getting all the driveway and all, you know. I mean, is that a problem?
They would put an easement on that.
That's what I'm looking at, if, if you allow. I'm just thinking, if you're gonna wanna come back again and do a bunch of one-acre lots now, you know, you know.
Well.
I think we ought to get.
With the septic bill too, you're now limited to seven lots no matter what, on these properties.
Right.
Most of them. So, I mean, I think we've had that discussion before, that the, the three-acre lot with the septic bill, you kind of have a contradiction there. You know, they're working against each other, so, you know, I think.
I mean, this situation, probably nothing's ever gonna happen, what's happened. But just, just, we, I'm thinking about if something comes up, it keeps coming up, different waivers, how we look at one waiver versus another waiver versus.
What were you concerned with?
Well, he doesn't even, he looks like he has a yard here, and he doesn't even bring it all into the, I assume this is what he's carving out. And then that brings up another point, I mean, do we, do we even know that the septic field is on this one acre property? That, to me, could be a problem immediately.
Of course, they would still have to submit a minor subdivision, meaning all that, I thought the department would look at it. But they wanted to have permission to proceed with smaller than three acres, see if they could do it first.
Would you, okay, well, that, like Bruce's thing with the driveway, the blade out, is that? The other thing, the dollars, you have to put a right away.
If they have road frontage, so if they need hundred-foot of road frontage on Route fifty, they could do a driveway easement in that case. We require rightways when they don't have frontage at all. If that's your only frontage, you do a rightway. But they have options there, and I think that's a loop driveway there. So it actually comes in on the lot and then kind of loops back around, so they have access on the one end of it. So that would be rather easy for them to just do an easement over that section if they want to, since they actually have the entrance on the lot itself.
So are you saying that we approve this, that those issues that Bruce has brought up will be identified in the process to?
Yeah, they still have to submit a minor subdivision, I mean, that's all the stuff I would look at. They'd have to have signatures for Steve to sign for the Health Department, things like that.
As long as you're satisfied, he's, whatever requirements that you're, you know, throwing at him, that's fine. I mean, with the waivers, I think, I have to get a lot of these farms and stuff to do, that we got now, that, that there are no rightways, that there's a lot of questions going on. What is your driveway, and, you know, you've got over fifty years. You know, I mean, it's not monitored, you know. And I, I think that's a good point to make, and that's something, if it comes up again, I'm gonna make sure that we address. So if you need to add some kind of caveat to it to, to protect, you know, location and stuff like that, then.
I could definitely include that in my comments when they actually submit the minor subdivision, hey, what's going on with this little spur? Do you need to have an easement on that, what's up?
Yeah, what, what does this do for, I mean, what's the interest, why?
Well, they're able to create a lot here. Otherwise, they're just including two more acres of farmland that they have to sell with this house. If they can do a smaller lot, they can just keep more of that farmland.
In the event that they did sell the house.
Yeah, if they wanted to sell the house, that probably.
Like you said, then it feeds against.
Yeah, it's kind of counterproductive, really, you know.
Yeah.
Anybody doing that?
I don't, I don't get with all that, I just. No, I mean, maybe it's not in our scope to be worried about, but I would hate to approve a lot and then find out that we allowed them to cut an acre out and the septic field's over on the other lot. If there's a way to protect us against that, I, I don't see any problem with it.
They have to submit it to the Health Department for approval.
It'll have to be all on that lot.
Yeah, it's all gonna be on that lot, yeah, they'll, they'll make sure all that happens.
So they're kind of looking for approval before they go spending money to get, uh.
Yeah, they just want to know if they go smaller, then they'll actually submit it, they'll have signatures for Steve in our office, yeah, all that stuff will get looked at.
And you're saying that part of the driveway weren't on that lot, they'd have to get it, they'd have to put an easement on the, on the property outside the acre, that?
Yeah, so if you don't have frontage at all on a road, then that's when you get into having thirty-foot rightaways.
Right.
If you have frontage on a road, you actually meet the requirements, which they do here. So even if they didn't have that entrance down there, we would allow two people just put a little shared easement or something, because they have frontage. That's what the ordinance could have said, but you have to have some sort of frontage. If you have it, you can do kind of, you have more options, you can do a little easement or something like that, share a driveway. It's just when you have no frontage, that's when it gets much trickier, you have to look a lot closer.
But the total park will only be two and a half acre or something?
No, it's twenty, it's over twenty, I forgot what the written one.
They said it was over twenty.
That's the nice thing about like, told Bruce that earlier, my daughter's waiting, she's heading to the track. What's the next step into that property? Because you're making them comply with vows, and in the future, you're gonna see, you have to comply the next time.
Well, if the, if the septic bill hadn't been passed, you know, I suppose you could say, well, we gotta be careful, because we're gonna allow somebody to create thirty-one-acre lots off this. But now that there's a septic bill, and we can only do seven.
I think no matter what the size.
Yeah, we've talked about that before, but it doesn't even really make sense to do a three-acre lot anymore. Because if you can only do seven to start with, we're gonna just chop it up even more, rather than, you know, you could build smaller lots around houses and maybe keep some larger chunks of land preserved.
I'm gonna make to approve a waiver from the minimum lot size of three acres, and allow them to have a one-acre lot around just the house.
So we know where the problem is at, and pick it up? Motion to approve?
I'll say it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? So moved? All right, I want, I want to just talk you through the math, you're saying the, you know, one, so if you, if I don't hear, I'm gonna take it. You know, if anybody watching on the computer.
If it helps you, I mean, when we did our public meeting, we allowed the speaker to.
Need to go over it.
We, we, we allowed the speaker to remove his mask while he was speaking, so.
Yeah, no problem. If anybody not here is clearly on the computers, keep calling and complaining, see the man a drunk.
Yes, well, just be thankful you don't wear glasses.
It's like a steaming up.
That's why you take it off, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna do the field case.
Okay. Hard time to get these, get these passes around. First one is variance, VR eight hundred, an application submitted by James and Susan Tollerino for a variance to allow the construction of a single-family residence to within sixteen feet and a depth to within five-foot of the rear property line. This is on Crowe's Point Road, and like residential ones, normally be looking at a forty-foot rear setback there.
That's thousand acres?
Yes, Crowe's Point.
Where's that, is that right on the turn?
Oh, man, something, something different going on there.
What's the rear property on the state?
Yes.
So they're gonna do buyback?
Yeah, so even if you own the buydown, the rear line is still a penalic line? If you have the buydown, it makes it much easier to get a variance to go closer to it, but we still say that the penalic is still in the rear, as far as anything is concerned.
So this is the state line here.
You see anything?
It's a pretty typical buydown, you know, variance.
We saw this on bottom, are there, can you have one?
Well, so the Planning Commission, the variance goes to you guys, and you can make comment if you want, you don't have to. It's going to the zoning board of appeals, so it's just if you guys have something that really concerns you, you put it out, otherwise, you could just say.
Yeah, we just, you know, down, those are something drastic, that's why, yeah.
It's like the old relaxed standard, then, right? And then they don't call it anymore, it's.
I don't have any call. Relaxed, then.
A buydown, very.
If you have to buy down.
Yeah.
And they can actually, you can go to zero with the law.
Yeah, the intent was that you would have an easier process to go through. Oh, I have any comments on that?
All right, someone down the line. Send them down to next group, right?
Yes. So this is variance eight oh one, application submitted by Silver Tree Marine for variance to allow the reduction of minimum setbacks to within fifty to the front, fifteen to the side, and nine to the rear property line. So this is kind of a unique one. The buydown piece is across the road, and Silver Tree wants to buy this and put in a boat ramp over there for their marine, not a public boat ramp, but for, for them to get boats in and out. They're going to use the house as a rental unit, but they're gonna store some marina supplies in the garage. They have enough acreage that they would be able to do that, they have enough acreage in the parcel that it will support two different uses. So part of this lot's gonna be used for marina use, that allows them to do the ramp, but that garage doesn't comply with marina setbacks. So that's what they're asking for, a variance from those marina setbacks, which are pretty strict, to allow that garage to be used as part of the marina operation.
That's the parcel kind of next to, down from the fire department, there's some place right here. And Tony, that's where the, they keep, Decree keeps their boat right across the street here. So the variance is.
Pretty tight.
Garage setback?
Yes, so it's, it's just a residential garage now, but they want to use it as part of the marina operation.
There's anything that says they can't do that?
Just the setbacks, just they're changing the use, so the setbacks are pretty strict for marinas. Marina definition says a use that is. either on the lakefront lot, all or part of which on the lakefront lot, so this is going to be, they have their lakefront marina, that allows them to do some other things on lots that aren't part of that main operation, so that's what this will be, um, so this is, this is kind of a unique one.
We're just granting variance to the existing, that doesn't open the door for them to build, a very big bookstore, building there and use the same setback.
No, if they did something new, they would have to come back and say again.
Well, that, like, that pretty tough getting to that, I'm going to get it. They come back and do something new, it's going to be a little more difficult, I think.
Is this another case where Ghosted Zone appeals for approval, we're just looking at it?
Yeah, you're just looking to say, do you have any comment, if not, you can say, this one's up to the zoning board of appeal.
Well, I got nothing to say about it, but you got one.
I'm going to tell the Bruce, he's going to have more.
I'll get to look at it again.
Some double down through?
You got a long area that night.
Yeah. Well, it's the first variance here in two, so it's a shut down thing.
Yeah.
This is the, it's quality in now, it's going to change potential in Hampton Inn, um, but this is VR eight oh two, an application submitted by twenty-seven oh four Positive Associates LLC for a variance to allow the construction of a pool enclosure to within thirty-five feet of the front property line. It's at two-seven oh four D Creek Drive, not forty-one, parcel fifty-four, so on the corner where the pool is, they have a pool there already, uh, they would like to make an enclosure around that, and it infringes on that front setback. That corner of it, so like a variance to make that an indoor pool, was already an outdoor pool.
See, maybe you know. Business must be pretty good.
Said there was a pool there before?
There is a pool there, but it's just a outdoor pool, and I guess they want to build that structure around it to enclose it, and part of that is what's going to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, down that corner.
Just by closing, it's a setback to.
Yeah, I guess you kind of see, it's just that little circle place where it would actually just open the setbacks, so the setbacks.
Okay.
It is going to have a corner that was going to be an issue.
That question, he goes marine.
Uh, no, this is, uh, quality in, D Creek Drive.
Yeah.
I think it's quality in now.
It's like a cobblestone in there.
Cobbleton, yes.
It's a big cobble.
Yeah, I, I.
It's a big white building?
Yeah, I think.
It's white, white, entertaining.
They've upgraded a little, this is, you know, under the fifth, taken over.
Mm-hmm.
It's only the way, it's not when you're coming down.
You know where the Exxon station is, right behind that Exxon, or that's, that's, right up in Rexland, you know where the cap, anyone run is, right beside this. Play D Creek Drive, it'll give you any place.
The last one, right now, I think I might interrupt this, do you guys have any comments?
I wouldn't, but Bruce, I have something to add to this.
Okay, so send that one on to the zoning board, no comment? Okay, um, last one, variance eight oh four, an application submitted by Cedar Shores condo for a variance to allow the construction of a deck to within three foot of the rear property line. Property is located thirteen seventy-five D Creek Drive. So they want to do decks for all these units, it's condo, and unit six and unit one, you can see, I think it's, um, three point two feet there and three point one, so everybody else complies, you can go up to within five foot of the rear property line with the deck, everybody else, all the other units are okay, they had two that came too close, so. And they're trying to build the same exact depth under every unit, since it's a condo.
So they want to go there. I don't think they've done all that.
They use the rear line. On the state?
Uh, I'm excited there.
I'm surprised.
Nah, I said it was long ones.
So the deck five, these, they say.
Yeah, basically, we always say the rear is the front line.
We can all, we're still across the road.
All these blind guys are very far to look at all the cases, we. All the same neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about the variance eight oh three, that's the same one?
Yeah, the same thing, yeah, it's a bunch.
Units one and units six, okay.
Yeah.
Just separate number for each one.
Okay.
That's it for the cases?
I think that's it for variance, just.
All right, one, uh, one just got on Apple together, is on the, uh, comprehensive planning agenda, I thought about it a couple times, we really haven't either. I don't think they've been doing much, and we haven't, we.
The last I talked to him, he said he was going to hopefully have something in August, but I haven't talked to him for a while, we've been kind of busy.
Yeah, I figured, I thought, yeah, we're going to work on it, we're going to work on it, and every time it gets back normal again.
But have we provided all our input to him on?
Yeah, there was a, there was something that Cheryl provided that was an economic, something that he, he did send that to her once in a while, and she made comments.
So they're supposed to, um, produce a draft for us, right here?
Yeah, I don't think they're waiting on anything else from us, I think the county has submitted everything. They're working on a lot of comments, all those things, you guys went through all meetings, they're supposed to, he said he hoped to have a draft in August.
You may have to call them once in a while, too.
Yeah, I may have, it's, it's just, I kind of thought about it this morning, I'm like, this guy's pretty nice, but I've thought about it for months, so. I'll, I'll make it note, try to just touch base with him, see what's more.
I guess the next question is, what would appeal about it, another meeting, when you got a, one guy, set a name for next month? You got a stopper when it's setting or in the out, you know, I guess to leave it down, if you have stuff that you need to take care of, we should have a meeting.
Yeah, I put, some of these people would ask me about the, these waivers, you know, a few months ago, like, let me know when you really need it, I'm going to try not to call these meetings until we have to. You know, I, I, it's a, it's a pain to want all this.
Once the local governor's standing up, you're going to hope to take it back up, or anybody say, hey, it's hard.
It's, we're going to stay pretty much like we are until the governor, if he happens to go to, I guess it'll be phase three, I think we're stalled in phase two right now. I think Kevin's thinking was, prior to the decision about schools, his thinking was, we're kind of going to follow the schools, if they say they're not going to bring kids back to the classrooms, that we're going to continue to operate like we are, basically allowing as many people as possible to work from home. Still operational, but you need to make an appointment to come in to do business, and I think that's what we're going to be for a while, I don't, I don't think we've, um, I'm not aware of us dropping the ball or anything, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's anything that we're not getting done, even though we do have a lot of people working from home. Obviously, some are an exception, like the county roads and the sheriff's department and those kind of people, but, um, I think we don't have a crystal ball, but I think until there's a vaccine and there's some assurance, you know, that, uh, this thing can be minimized or mitigated, I, I don't think we're going to, I don't think we foresee any immediate changes coming up.
Let me ask you a dumb question. You guys have a summer school program, right?
Say that.
You just have a summer school program, right, where they drop in from.
Do you guys want to go ahead and end the meeting now, and then?
What's that?
Do you guys want to go ahead and end the meeting now?
Yeah, that's the journey plan, I get.
Okay, so we'll, we'll adjourn.
Yeah, adjourn.